Testing.
We are, Mr. Mayor.
Today is Wednesday, May 10th, 2023. It is 6:01 PM, and this is a special City Commission meeting of the City of West Miami. This meeting is called to order. For the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Item two, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanés.
Press.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Chaves Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have called.
Thank you. Next item.
Item three, public comments. None, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing none, unless they're invisible. Next.
Item four, special agenda items. Item four A, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami approving the employment agreement between the City of West Miami and Edward Silva as city manager, authorizing the city manager Yolanda Aguilar to execute the agreement attached herein as Exhibit A, providing for an effective date.
Could I have Mr. Silva actually come to the podium? And you weren't, you weren't here when we made the resolution, so first I'd like to give you an opportunity to speak, and then we'll ask questions on the contract, and we'll go through it, so please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and staff. It's an honor to be here in front of you. It's an honor to have received your confidence in the vote to name me your city manager, but I would be remiss if I don't take a second out and congratulate your current manager, Yolanda Aguilar, for the incredible job she's done. Forty years of service and twenty-nine as a manager is extraordinary. I'm looking forward to working for this city. I'm looking forward to getting to work and to getting the things done and the visions that you as a council, as a whole body, have, and move the city forward to your vision and your direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This moment, I'd like to, before we start discussion, I'd like to fill in a blank here. On item 3.1, annual salary, the salary that we've been discussing is $195,000, which is in line with
Which page?
That's page three.
Page three.
Section 3.1. That's the only blank on the contract. And that number was come to, come about by looking at the, there was a study done through all the cities and looking at what every city pays proportionally to population, so that is in line with every city in this county. So with that, is there any questions or comments on the item?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there's another correction that I made yesterday in section 3.2.4. Actually, 3.2.5, titled automobile.
It's highlighted, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
It is a monthly amount.
Yes, correct.
Mayor, what page you said was?
Which, which for one? For, for the one that the manager mentioned, or the one I mentioned?
The one I mentioned is page three.
It's page three.
And page four on the other one.
Page, it's, it's item 3.1, and the one Yep.
321.
No, 3.3, 3, 3 period 1. So It's there.
3.1.
3.1.
Oh, 3.1.
And then the other item was 3.2.5, the next page. That's the one that's highlighted. It's highlighted, the corrections highlighted.
3.225.
Right.
Yeah, that's monthly, but.
So. I expect everyone's got a chance to review it. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, comments? Table. Okay.
I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
With a caveat.
Okay.
That Mr., Mr. Silva, our incoming new city manager, start, I think, I think the original date was the 31st?
30th.
The 30th.
I would like him to start on the 17th.
17th.
I believe that our incoming city manager is able to.
So the 17th is
There's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. Madam Manager, do you have any issues with your benefits? I know we were, we were discussing things related to your
Right, and we had discussed the end of the month because of my benefits, my Medicare Part A, Part B, which I've applied for. As a matter of fact, I was on the phone with Social Security today, and I'm also transitioning at the end of the month to my husband's insurance within Miami FOP. And I cannot do the, I have to have a, a coverage until the end of the month.
Could we, and I, and I want to, I want to accommodate that, as we've, as we've mentioned before. So can, can we have a, a time period where you are a, an employee of the City of West Miami overlap? Is, is, as I'm saying, how can we structure that?
It doesn't affect me in terms of pension benefits, because I don't have a pension benefit.
Right, no, I'm just talking, I'm just talking to accommodate your benefit.
Right, as long as
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to impact your
Right.
transition benefits. I want to make sure that that's, that's not
Right.
an issue.
And if it suits the Vice Mayor, and this is what the commission want, I will absent myself until, and allow Mr. Silva to get acquainted.
But, but you'd still be, but you'd still be in the benefit, that you'd still be able to
If I'm on payroll.
Okay.
If I am on payroll.
Until 30th.
Until the 30th.
Got it. Okay, so that's, that's possible, the overlap period? Okay, I just want to make sure that doesn't, that doesn't impact your, your, the benefits, your, you know, I don't want you to have a gap.
No, no, I'm fine like that.
So what, what is the answer? You proposal is he start at 17?
Yes.
Listen, I mean
Is any difficulty the conversation, you with the manager?
No.
We just, we just, we just resolved the issue.
Yeah, I was just making sure there's no gap, because
So it's okay for you, that Mr. Silva started 17?
Sure, if this is the commi, what the commission, the preference of the commission, I'm fine with that, sir.
I want to be sure that I
Yes, as long as my benefits are intact until that I can make that change at the end of the month, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm sort of confused. Now, if you have, you're going to have dual mineatures at some point?
No, I mean, no. What it would be, the, the, the goal would be that, 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 that Yolanda makes, we make sure that she is still on payroll till the 30th, to make sure that her benefits, there's no gap in the benefits. I, I don't want to impact any benefits.
So she would now be a manager?
Let, let, let me
Vice Mayor, why don't you clarify what you're trying to do?
Be clear, okay. The, the motion is that the incoming city manager, Mr. Silva, start effectively on the 17th. Next Wednesday. He becomes the city manager. And all authorities and, and whatever it is that falls under that, that title falls, falls on him.
And I understand that.
So there will only be one city manager.
And I understand that, but my question is this. I mean, the position, how would your title end Yolanda Aguilar until the 30th?
Well, that's up to, that's up to you guys to figure out.
Not for me to figure out?
No, not for you, but yeah.
Not for me to figure out. You're the one that appoints.
Does there need to be a title?
Yes, sir. I mean, somebody has to sign contracts, and somebody
He, he, he's the city manager.
He does not have signature in the bank until you all pass a resolution.
Correct.
He couldn't sign documents in effect that have banking
Correct, which, which
transactions attached to those.
When is the next, wait, wait, hold on, hold on. She's correct about that. What is, when is the next? I, you, you both sent me a resolution at some point recently
Yes.
on, in regards to that.
Yes, I sent it, yes.
You sent me that resolution. So when is the next commission meeting?
The 17th.
May 17th.
Okay, so
And that resolution is on the agenda for that day.
So maybe 17th is not a good date. If, if, to accomplish, you know, what your goal, I guess, is to just, you know, be able to start going on, on your items, maybe the 18th would be a better idea? Because you're talking about transitioning, the item is on this, on the agenda, right?
The item is on the agenda, but allow me to let you know that even if we are expeditiously transacting those resolutions or transmitting those to the banking institutions, it may take paperwork, a couple days, to get that resolution and get his signature on all the cards. All the signature cards have to be changed by the bank. That's why I put that on the agenda for the 17th, Mayor, in anticipation of a new city manager coming in with an effective date of May 30th, which is what Mr. Silva and I had talked about, and what you and I had talked about. If there's a desire for me to step down, I'll step down immediately. I have no problem with that.
No, 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 we're, we're, we're not, we're not trying to do that. So Vice, Vice Mayor, what is, what are your
And, and, and the fact that if I step down immediately, okay, and you're going to pay me my wages until the end of the month, I'm fine with that, if that is the will of the commission and what the Vice Mayor would like for me to do.
That doesn't help us, though.
My question is
But, but what I'm trying to say is if I step down
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. My question is this. In what capacity legally I am supposed to conform this in here? I understand the will of the Vice Mayor, and you can take out the, the opinion that, or the decision that that can be so, but I need to find out in what capacity we would appoint or leave Yolanda Aguilar as what on the 30th?
Senior advisor, you know, whatever, whatever
How about assistant city manager?
Good, I think that that's wonderful.
You know, what
That way, that way, if there's anything to be signed, it, it, it can happen, or anything that, that is not updated to Mr. Silva to, to have, she can assist and
That's exactly what I was going to suggest, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, all right, cool. There you go, that's the solution.
Assistant city manager or deputy city manager, one of the two.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, it's, it's, yeah.
So, so the caveat is on the 18th?
Again, look, it, it, it doesn't really, I, I would just do it the 18th, but like, like the manager mentioned, it doesn't, it's, it's not going to, even after the resolution, it's not going to take effect with the banks, but, but I, you know, just to make it cleaner, I would say the 18th. I would say the 18th, if you want to make it cleaner.
Okay.
After that resolution.
So, so the resolution, resolution changes to the date of the 18th? That'll be next Thursday?
Correct, it'll be day after the commission meeting on the 17th. Yes, Thursday.
So we're going to have another meeting on the 18th?
No.
17th.
No, the, the 17th, we're going to have a regular meeting, the meeting we already have scheduled. On that meeting, the manager and the attorney had already an item coming to change the, the bank signatures. That is, that we have to do by, and so that's going to be the 17th. The, the idea to accommodate the Vice Mayor's motion would be to have Ed start on the 18th, after that resolution is passed. It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's not much of a difference. So that's his motion now on the table?
So the, the date, the finish is May 30th, or is it going to be May 17th?
18th.
18th.
18th now, I guess.
That's, that's, that's your motion, and that's the, you discuss right now, right?
Yes. Is that your motion, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
So with the understanding that it's not going to affect your benefits, that you've earned, obviously, after being here for so long, I'm okay seconding that motion as well. At the end of the day, Madam Manager is going to still be here as a consultant, you know, so I don't think the dates matter. Just let's Ed come in now and, and start off and
Sure, and we, if you want to approve the resolution this evening for the bank accounts, we could get to work on that tomorrow and make it an effective date of May 17th, or this Friday at the end of the day. I, I, it doesn't affect me. Mayor, whatever works best for the city.
Can we do that, Mr. Attorney?
I, I'm sorry?
Can we do that?
Yes, sir, you can.
By four-fifth vote, we can include it in this?
Yes, sir, you can include it in the agenda today. Excuse me, excuse me, let me finish.
Hold on, no, no, yeah, let's make, make, yes.
My understanding is this, that the motion would be, as amended, appointed Yolanda Aguilar as deputy or as assistant city manager as the Vice Mayor suggested, and to have Mr. Silva be the manager on the 18th of May, right?
Yes.
And that will be the, the friendly amendment that we have on the motion.
Go ahead. Well, the 18th is because we had to wait for that resolution, but if we're going to vote on having
Advance and have all the banking information.
When is this resolution coming now? Go ahead, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have to draft the resolution downstairs. I can go downstairs, get it, and you may
I'm sorry, before you continue with that, when were, when were you leaving? I know you, you were leaving at some point.
I'm leaving on the 16th.
You're leaving on the 16th.
I won't be here on the meeting of the 17th. I have my, my acting city
So, okay, so no, that, that's actually an important, that's actually an important, that's actually important. So who has the ability to swear in manager? You would, right? You would have that ability.
I do.
Right, okay. So that's actually important, an important, that's an, that's an important fact that we have to keep in mind.
The clerk will be out for how long?
For a while, right?
Two weeks, fifteen days.
Yeah, so you'll be out until, until next month. Okay, so, yeah, I guess you got the resolution, and the resolution's written, I, I've read it.
Yes, we, we have, we have to draft. Let me go downstairs and print copies, and I'll bring them to you if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please. No, you don't have any excuse, go to the restroom.
It is your wish, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioners, to have Yolanda Aguilar to execute this contract today, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
I mean, she, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. As amended.
Well, we haven't, we haven't voted on it, but yes.
Are we having five-minute break?
She's going to print
She's going to print it now.
A new, the resolution with the date.
Just a
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I believe we may have an issue, or maybe not.
Tell me.
If I become the assistant city manager for a few days until the end of the month, I will not be the ex-official city clerk.
Okay.
So Mr. Silva could, may be able to, to become the ex-official city clerk.
But he can't swear himself in.
He will. I'm, I'm sorry?
But he can't swear himself in.
No, 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 he cannot.
So who, who
I'm a notary public. I mean, I don't need a title. I mean, the, the
Yeah, sure, let, let, let me just clarify this, because this was going to be an issue regardless, because of, of the, the clerk's absence from past the 30th. Who can swear in Mr. Silva from, in, from the city?
I, I can swear him in.
You can swear him in as, as a notary public? As, I mean, I, I
I can swear him in as a notary public.
So
I can swear him in, and I would be honored to do so.
You have to be in a, a notary public?
You do.
Yeah, what about you?
I think Assistant Chief Pete Delgado is also in.
Well, yeah, but she's notary, so it's, I mean, that's not, that's not a problem. So, but a notary can
That's a problem.
A, 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 a notary, but is, is that all to require, Mr. Attorney? Do, do, I mean, I'm going to put you on the spot, because I know this is a random question, but
I am an international law notary, so I could notarize in the United States and throughout the Americas by order of the State Department.
Yeah, no, I, I, the question is not, I, we, we have a lot of notaries up here. The question is who has, is it just, does it just have to be a notary in order to swear him in, or does it have to be a, a, a city, a city clerk?
No.
It can be a notary, it can be
Okay, that's the question.
You have been sworn in the past by priests.
Okay, that's the question, then, then, then the manager Aguilar can
The issue is this, Mr. Mayor. If the clerk goes on, on to vacation, and the manager is going to be the manager and the clerk, that cannot be. You cannot have two titles at the same time.
That, that's, that's what I
So you have to appoint someone to serve as a clerk
Okay.
for the purpose of acting as a clerk.
Okay, because
You have to have an acting clerk in order to do that pursuant to a charter
Okay.
and pursuant to Florida law.
Because that was going to be an issue regardless.
Yes, sir.
Because Yolanda wouldn't be able to swear him in at, at the same time that, that, that was an issue regardless, so, and, and the clerk was going to be absent past the 30th, so
The manager can swear and appoint pursuant to our charter, a clerk in absence of the clerk.
Okay.
Okay.
Do, do we have an idea of who we're going to appoint clerk? I don't know that we've both been on, on vacation at the same time before.
It may well be that we can appoint, or the manager may want to appoint Mercy Soler from the back.
Well, I think you would have to appoint that
Or I would appoint her. A nary can designate a, an acting clerk before she leaves, given the fact that I will not be the city manager. And, and I'd like to go on record to say
No, she would, she, she
to say something here, and I hope no one takes it personal, and especially you, because you're coming in, and, and you know, I'd like to have a wonderful relationship with you. I would rather step down completely and start as an advisor to the manager come June 1st. I, June 1st, and, and if you want to pay me for the rest of the month, that's fine. If you don't, it's fine too. No, no big deal. You know, it's obviously, it's obvious that Mr. Blanés has reasons for wanting for me to step down immediately and not wait until the 30th, which is what we had all agreed to, you know, over numerous conversations. I take offense by his comment and by his, his not wanting to wait another two weeks, and I, I respect the, the office that he holds a lot, but I'm not going to sit here and be belittled by this man. I won't.
Wait, hold, hold, hold
Not at this stage of the game.
Hold on, hold on, we're, we're, we're getting, we're getting to a very personal point here.
You're taking this personal.
Sir, everything with you becomes personal. I'm sorry, everything.
You know, one of the reasons that I'm bringing it, are we, are we live?
Yes, we are.
One of the reasons that I'm bringing this up is because there's a dire situation. There's a lack of reporting to a certain department, and we have an extension, and this work needs to get done as soon as possible. So I, I just felt that it was efficient to have you and to have him come in. At the same time, it gives him the opportunity to get acquainted with the city, and at the same time, it gives you the opportunity to do the work that you were supposed to do that you didn't do.
I was going to do that irrespective of it, but
Well, we have an extension, we have an extension because the work was not done. Just like we lost a $200,000 Florida
No fault of mine, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Blanés. You know, I take the blame for everything.
So if you want to take it personal, take it personal, but it's always the will of the commission.
Yes, sir, and I respect the will of the commission.
Because you're going to have to take it personal with the whole commission.
Hold on, this is
Well, obviously, then you're already saying every, you have all the votes that you need.
This is, this is getting
If it's so happens.
Please.
This is getting, this is getting very
You, 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 you assume a lot of things.
Sir.
You, you're so
You've said enough, with all due respect.
You are the person that is so less self-aware than I've ever met.
Thank you.
You have no idea.
Thank you.
Enough, enough.
Thank you.
Please. Can we get back to, can we get back on track? This has gotten, this has become
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, when you were, when you were absent printing these things out, it became apparent that you have to, you have to appoint a, an acting city clerk, because neither, neither Yolanda nor you can be city clerk in that time period.
I have a deputy, Mercy Soler.
Okay, thank you. And she has the ability to swear people in?
She might.
She's not a notary public. I don't know if that makes a difference.
The city attorney has done it in the past.
Okay.
So the city attorney can swear Mr. Silva in.
All right.
He, he swore me in in the past, so Mr. Viallo was
Let's, let's go ahead and simplify all of this in here.
Yes, please.
There's a motion on the table by the Vice Mayor. And the motion on the table should take precedence to any other thing, except that any friendly amendment can be done. So the motion that I understand, because I have to be very clear into what I put in paper, motion by the Vice Mayor is that Mr. Silva is going to take the office of the manager of the City of West Miami on the, Mr. Vice Mayor?
The 17th.
On the 17th, okay. On the 17th, then, my understanding, so I, I can clarify the record, is that Yolanda Aguilar is going to be either deputy mayor, as the Vice Mayor suggested, or the assistant manager. Is that correct, Mr. Commissioner?
Correct, if you deem that correct, yes.
Okay, so then, my understanding is that the sitting city clerk is going to be absent, because she's on vacation, and she's going to appoint a deputy city clerk. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
No, she's my deputy. I appointed her a long time ago, Mercy Soler.
Okay, Mercy Soler. So then, on the time that the, whoever has to swear who, I will be the one that's swearing in the, the manager? Mr. Mayor?
Is that a question for me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, whoever, whoever, you, you, can you do it? I mean
Yes, I can do that. Yes, sir.
Yes, you, yes, you were, you were voluntold.
Okay, so the next step is to either hear a second on the Commissioner, I'm, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Blanés.
I seconded that motion earlier, after clarifying that sitting manager doesn't lose any of her benefits. My decision with that is because we have somebody with a lot of experience that's going to come in and work alongside of her as a consultant. This should be a consultant, so we aren't losing anyone. We're gaining someone by moving this forward. That's the way I look at it, and that's why I seconded that motion.
Okay. Not as a consultant, but a deputy manager. Is that correct?
Correct. Until Yes, because, yes, yes, that, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
That, that is wild wind, okay. Wait, so what, we have a, we have a
We had, we need a motion to adopt
Mayor, Mayor, you need to, we need to vote.
Okay, hold on, hold on, there, there, there's a, okay, there's a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
Okay, do
We need to call the
Okay, do it.
Vote, yeah.
I have a question for you.
Go, go for it. Yes.
You are the mayor.
Yes.
You are a lawyer. We do not have any conflict after the discussion we have been having here?
Any conflict in what?
The 17th?
No.
There's no conflict?
That's a legal question to me, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
You should not answer that. No, there's no conflict, sir. The mayor is not supposed to give a legal, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm not a lawyer up here, so it's fine.
The mayor is not supposed to give legal opinion of being a mayor, even though he's a lawyer.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanés?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're clear now. Are we going to vote on the actual contract of, of Mr. Silva?
That was, that was the contract.
That was, that was the resolution. Now you need to vote on including, first, on including the resolution on the agenda, which was not, was not included.
I, I, I need a motion to include resolution, the resolution on the bank signatures onto the agenda.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Saying none is included. Please call, please read the resolution.
Yes, this is a resolution of Mayor and City Commission, amending resolution blank, which, this is the last resolution that was adopted, including the, the city manager's signature, which I get the, the resolution number, by removing the bank signature of Yolanda Aguilar, city manager, who has resigned effective May 29, 2023, at midnight, and adding the signature of Edward Silva as man, as city manager, with an effective date of May 30, 2023, and adding the same, adding the name and signature of Liliana Adai, accounting clerk, providing May 30, 2023, effective date. So I think
My understanding that that would be amended as well.
Yes, yes, because this is a draft we had.
So you need a motion to amend the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Motion. Second.
Wait, wait, where, where's the amendment?
The amendment would be in February 30th.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. Understood, understood, understood.
17, yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Do you want to call the roll?
As amended, Commissioner, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanés?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. As far as I know, Yolanda Aguilar can go out to the bank tomorrow and Mr. Silva can go out to the bank tomorrow and change the signature on the bank.
The way it works, Mr. Villalobos, is they, we transmit the resolution, it has to be executed by the clerk and the bank will prepare signature cards. Generally, they come out here and take, make sure that they are, they have someone, they bring a witness to see the person sign in front of them with their ID. I can tell you that we will aim, we will do everything in our power to do this before the end of the week, as well Mercedes is leaving the country on Sunday on vacation for two weeks.
Also, okay.
So we will try to accomplish this or at least...
I have to go on vacation.
So do I, so do I.
This is probably a good time.
I'll just get on one of your vacations.
Yeah. So we will try to accomplish all of this. If it's outside of our hands, I just want to leave it on the record that it's not going to be on us. So what I'm going to do is have him change, you know, the signature, especially the payroll account and everything, effective May 17th. That will give the bank a couple days to prepare the paperwork.
Okay.
So we may not get Mercedes's signature, hopefully they will honor that or we'll get her to go to the bank or have them come back when she returns from her vacation.
Okay.
And the reason for adding Eliana Adai is we added a third person to the accounting office a while back ago. Eliana has proven to be a very trustworthy employee and in situations such as this one where you have people that are out, it's very important that you have a bank signer.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Something else on this agenda, right?
Yes. Mr. Mayor?
And again, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Being adjourned.